Call the meeting to order tonight. Renata, if you do the roll call, please.
Adams?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Ettinger?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
McEvers?
Here.
Gookin?
Here.
Do we have Pastor Mike Slothauer here tonight? Do not see Mike. So what we will do now is we'll go and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Steve, please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any amendments to the agenda tonight? I don't believe there are. Don't see any amendments to the agenda. We will move on to the presentations. We have the city logo acknowledgement. Keith Erickson going to present something for us.
Oh, it's up.
As you all turn and look at it, I see. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, the city has worked closely with students from North Idaho Colleges graphic design team for the better part of this year on a new logo. And there it is. The council unanimously adopted it in October, and we are here to acknowledge the North Idaho Colleges graphic design team that designed it. So I'd like to bring up to the table Darcy Gross and Philippe Bao, who've been a big part of this process. You've already seen this on our website, Facebook pages, so it's been well received, too. Philippe, would you like to speak about the process briefly?
Basically, I want to, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you, council members as well, our guest, Dr. Nodlap, from NIC, and our Vice President of Instruction, Dr. Lita Byrne. So thank you very much for giving us the opportunity, but it's not my job. Let me introduce you. Darcy, who created this wonderful logo, she can tell you about our process.
Thank you, City Council. It was an honor to make this logo for the city. It's a very cool thing, and it was a joy to work on. I just wanted to highlight the beautiful area we live in, and it's a privilege to live here, so thank you.
Thank you. I think Keith has a plaque for you.
And Darcy, thank you so much. And Philippe, I would like you to come up here, too, as the instructor for these, this project. I know you had over 40 students involved and spent many months doing this, so we really appreciate your hard work, and it's great to involve community students in a project like this. So thank you so much. Darcy?
Thank you.
Keith, why don't you read the plaque to us? Keith?
I will read it. In appreciation, December 2, 2014, Darcy Gross, NIC graphic design team, the city of Coeur d'Alene is pleased to acknowledge the fine work of Darcy Gross for the design of the new city logo, what you see up here, and the exceptional community work of the NIC graphic design team. Special thanks to instructor Philippe Bao, who led the team in this design exercise. And again, this is a several-month process, and there was lots of back and forth and involvement with the city, and we really appreciate the great work you did. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to public comments. Anybody wishing to address the council has three minutes. Come to the podium.
Good evening. I'm Greg Johnson from the Midtown Neighbor Group. I'm here to thank each and every one of you for the roundtable that we had today that you guys put together for us with the LCDC board, they were there, the housing company, neighbors, and you all were there. And thank you for that. I'm here for that. And I will have to say, it's the first time I heard the word compromise used positively in a conversation with this ongoing project. So just here to thank you guys in person for that, and we'll see what happens now. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else wishing to come up for a public comment?
Susan Snidderker, City of Coeur d'Alene. Sorry, my voice is going. The minutes of the October 24th meeting, LCDC meeting, reflect that the North Idaho Family Groups representative, Candace Godwin, was present and requested that LCDC consider being a $15,000 visionary partner. At that meeting, LCDC said it would take the request under advisement. My understanding is that Councilwoman Miller appeared at the LCDC meeting in November, made another presentation, and LCDC funding was approved. I note that North Idaho Family Groups Articles of Incorporation filed February 3, 2014, lists Kiki Miller as one of the incorporators. Mrs. Miller, if you in fact have an interest in North Idaho Family Group, which will have received money from LCDC, do you intend to recuse yourself in matters concerning LCDC due to conflict of interest? Thank you.
I guess what I would like to do is I would like to ask Mike to give a legal opinion on whether a councilperson that's involved in something through LCDC, if there's a conflict there, or I think Kiki's trying to do a good thing here. I don't think she's trying to do a bad thing.
No doubt. So as I understand it, she has an organization that has a contract now with LCDC. I don't think that would prevent her on this body with, she can't contact directly with the city. I don't think there's anything that prohibits her from having a contract with an entity that has a contract with the city. So that would be my analysis.
Or it wouldn't prohibit her from having any, if there's any issues in regards to LCDC of voting on that or having any decision on that?
I don't think so.
Really?
Yes.
I'll just make one more note on that. There is, there's another layer to that, and I'd be happy to talk to you and answer the questions, but I did go through all of the proper checks and balances before I got involved with this. The North Idaho Family Group is a nonprofit that I'm a board member of, so it's not a, I don't have an interest in it. I'm a board member on that, like I am on a lot of other entities, like Vision 2030, those types of things. So that's one layer of it, but I did, I did check with all of the people involved in legal before proceeding because I do want to do a good thing, and the Education Information Center, which is the project that the family, one of the things that group is working on, is going to be a great benefit, and I think LCDC saw the merit of that. So I appreciate that.
But when you're a seated councilwoman, you're an elected official, and you're asking for tax dollars from another entity, a separate governmental entity. It appeared to me to, I just wondered.
Thank you. I appreciate the question.
Any other one wishing to give public comment tonight? Okay. We will move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of a consent calendar.
Thank you.
Including Resolution 14-051.
Is there anything else on there? That's all you? Okay. So motion and a second. Any discussion?
That was really quick, Mr. Mayor. That really was.
That was quick. I like that. Okay. Roll call, please, Renata.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Motion carried. Announcements? Anyone in council have an announcement?
Yeah.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Hello, everyone. I just wanted to express my appreciation to the Downtown Association. I drove in tonight, and it looks great. It really does. All the lights are up. It's very pretty. If you haven't been downtown, drive downtown and look. I also wanted to give a shout out to the Hagado Incorporated for doing a great job at the resort. And Front Avenue, which we closed, and I know that was controversial with a lot of people, we still own it, but I thought, when I was going through this and I was thinking about closing it down, I thought about what it would look like this time of year, and it has met my expectations. It really looks lovely. It looks like it'd be a lovely, nice, romantic walk through there, so I wanted to express my appreciation for that, too. I also wanted to make some comments regarding Ironman. That was in the, in the paper last week. The Chamber is thinking of dropping the Ironman event, and I wish they wouldn't. I think Ironman is great for the city, but I remember when we did that contract a couple of years ago, and it struck me is that the Chamber was being asked to do a lot. They're asked to shoulder a great burden of responsibility for a for-profit entity, which is the Ironman Corporation. They have to get hotel rooms for Ironman staff, they have to pay for the security, they have to pay for the insurance on the event, and I met with the Chamber, met with Steve Wilson, and talked about it a little bit, and he was okay because there is a benefit that we derive from that. But I'd also like to just throw something out there, which is, a lot of people in town, they rent out rooms in their house, and they rent out their house, or they have a granny flat or something, and they're making money off Ironman. They don't have to pay any hotel tax, and they don't have to pay, some of them perhaps don't pay anything to the Chamber. And I would just suggest that people who do that, who make a good amount of money renting out their home or whatever, consider making a donation to the Chamber to continue this good event. It would be a positive thing, and I think you'll benefit from it in the long run. And those are just my thoughts. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else have any announcements? Okay. We'll move on to Public Works, Resolution Number 14-052, Agreement with the Tiki Hut for Food Concession at Independence Point for a three-year term. And who would like to give the presentation on that? You guys going to flip a coin down there? It's like Troy's been nominated.
I want the record to reflect that Steve Anthony, who should be here, is at the Gonzaga Games, so we know where his priorities are, so.
So we do have a substitute.
Mr. Mayor, let me make a couple of comments on the Public Works Committee meeting since we were there, Kiki and I and Dan. We don't get many issues that come, are above ground. We deal with everything underground, pipes and wires and roads and the fun stuff, you know. So it was real strange for us to come across something that had to do with people and food. So we kind of got going on this thing and started doing comparisons and stuff, and so we kind of changed everything that came through. And I think that's why these guys are here tonight. We sort of shuffled on and put it on the consent calendar. It doesn't belong there because we sort of changed the contract that was negotiated, and so that's why it's kind of coming back to the whole council. We kind of went off on a path that, looking for fairness and equality and junk food. So excuse us while, these guys were all there except for Mike, so maybe you guys can fill in.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Yes, we had a new item for our Public Works Committee, and they did their best effort to ask great questions. So we have in front of you a lease agreement for a vendor that has done a very good job for the city of Coeur d'Alene. He was in the audience, and we actually brought him to the table, Randy, and he runs the Tiki Hut down at Independence Point. It's been a very good vendor, a good quality product. I like the word ambassador for the city of Coeur d'Alene as he helps people. He has a number of photos taken next to his Tiki Hut because it's a very original atmosphere as well as an original building. Our council members asked some really great questions, so let me first start with the Let's Move program. That was adopted by all of you in July. It's a competitive process in which we are looking to curb the obesity of kids, give them healthy choices in foods, supply activities for our young people. We are, actually have a number of awards in that category, Mr. Mayor. We continue to bring forward bronze, silver, and gold medals in this competition for the early start, Start Smart category. We have a bronze and silver medal as a city in Goal Three, which is smart servicing for students, and we have a bronze medal in Goal Four, which is model food service. So you see how the food-to-vendor area ties into this program, and your staff worked diligently with the owner of the Tiki Hut to have him incorporate into his menu safe, sound, healthy foods, and he had agreed to that. So our council members had a good discussion about, is that equitable? And as staff, we believe that you charged us to go forward with this, and we have a number of awards that say this is the right thing to do. Then we got into the discussion about the cost of living increase, and in the negotiated lease agreement, it was proposed to be 3% per year. As the council members did a good job of asking questions, the city is not absolutely consistent in what it has for a cost of living increase in every contract that we do for these types of services that vendors come in and provide. Typically, it hovers around the cost of living. There's a number of cost of livings, so we have been specific in a number of the contracts. I mean, there's a Northwest region-specific cost of living increased for non-urbanized areas. We can go to that level of detail, and I think that's what the council members were potentially going to send back to our Parks and Rec Commission to standardize what that cost of living could be. This one has a little nuance to it because this has been a vendor for a number of years. In the past, this vendor has not had a cost of living increase due to those economic times and the fact that we wanted that vendor to be as successful as possible, and he has done a very good job. So hopefully I've captured in a condensed version the discussion that took place at Public Works. I'd entertain any questions that you might have.
Troy, I spoke a little bit with Dan about this, and I guess the issue that came up was the consistency of the city leases, that whether it be a 3% or a cost of living, and I get the feeling of the Public Works, I don't want to speak for you, but from my conversation with you, is that you felt that maybe we should look for some consistency in what the lease increases are, if they're all based upon CPI, or what index should they be linked to? So Dan, maybe?
Yeah, and I discussed this with you, I discussed it with Steve Anthony, and I discussed it a little bit with Renata, and I think, you know, Troy, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think part of the problem is we've kind of let you down as council because we really haven't provided any guidance as to what we want to see with regards to an increase in the year-over-year for these leases, and so things just kind of have happened. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to prepare us a policy for lease increases based on the CPI, and just go ahead and set that so that there's no questions in the future.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, so we got a second discussion on that.
So when we talk about, we're talking about food, I think our discussion that I remember was the Memorial Field food stand, the Tiki Hut, and now the Harbor Center, Harbor House. There was other things. There's docks, and there's boats, and so that's where we were kind of, is everything equal or is everything different? And from what we understood, everything's been different. You can make a deal, and that goes way back, Ron, probably way back in the Park days. Memorial Field lady was there, what, 20 years or something, wasn't she? So, you know, and like, the boss said, you want good people, and it's a tough racket, you know? It's a tough business to just do for three months and do a good job and then come back for more. So I think that was probably the initial conversation that got us a little sidetracked going, is this fair to everybody? Is CPI fair to the boats and the docks than it is 3% for the food guys? And that's kind of where I remember it going, so.
But I think even, and the CPI question was that one of the food guys' contract was based on CPI, and the other one was 3%. And that's kind of where my thought was, boats could be one thing, but food, if it's CPI, should be CPI for everyone, not 3% for one and CPI for someone else, which could be a much different percentage, but we just felt like it, I just kind of thought that seemed a little irregular.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, the directive is for vendors. This is for food vendors only. I realize that we have long-term leases with the University of Idaho and with St. Vincent de Paul and other items, but this, in order to keep it kind of manageable, is just about the food vendors themselves, which is like Woody said, it's Memorial Field, it's the Tiki Hut, and it's whatever goes into Harbor House, and then, I don't know, is the concessions at Ramsey covered with this or not? But I would assume they would be if that was a contract.
I think we do have, though, some other non-food leases that are out on the dock as well. You have Brooks Seaplane.
This would just be food. This would, I mean, if we want, if you want, if the council's will is to address all of the leases, then we could do that, but I was trying to think of something that would be a little bit easier, which would just be with Mr. Anthony for these park-and-rec type of things.
Troy, do you think we should take it back to staff to have them come back as a recommendation? My feeling it would be that a CPI index could be tied to all leased properties, but maybe we need to do a little bit more homework on that before we?
Yeah, I would suggest that we can come back with a couple of recommendations. Parks and Recreation are a factor in that. You're going to have a new opportunity for a vendor at Memorial Field as that goes out, and they bid that, you know, maybe it comes in really high because it's highly desirable, or it goes the other way. So as staff, we're here to negotiate in order to find the best vendor and keep them there. 3%, if we do the math, 2.3 was the cost of living last year in July for the non-urbanized. 3% is pretty close to that, and on this contract, it's probably less than $70 a year as we do the math on these $5,000 transactions, but we can sure standardize it.
And from what I understand, the folks had agreed to the 3% lease, so they're fine with it. So maybe what our task for us tonight is to approve the lease for the Tiki Hut and then act on Dan's motion for then staff to come back to us to a, for a recommendation on future leases as to what an increase would be tied to.
And then I think we need to look at what Public Works had brought forward, because it did not have, if I recall correctly, it did not have any increase in this three-year contract with this vendor. So it's...
Yeah, that's how we ended up with it at, we wanted to freeze it at what he paid last year until we could work this out. But you're saying the contracts get done once a year?
No, this is a multi-year contract. But that was your recommendation was different than what the staff report was.
We're kind of messing that process up, aren't we?
You learned the lesson here, which is you never give this kind of stuff to Public Works.
There you go. Yes, sir. I don't.
We're only going to give you stuff in the dirt.
We just the stuff in the dirt.
Well, I would think, my opinion on leases are that the, the, things go up every year of cost of living. Cost of living is, is a fair increase to have tied to a lease. Like Troy said, they've agreed to the 3%. I would like us, from my opinion, to move forward with the, with the 3% lease. It's something that they feel comfortable with, the folks feel comfortable with. They've done a good job. We want to continue that ongoing relationship. So that's just my two cents. Ron?
I thought we, I thought we discussed this at last council meeting and approved the Tiki Hut to be down there. I mean, and they agreed to the 3%. I thought we had discussed this. Why was it brought up at, at Public Works? Woody, why?
It was parks because there was no general services. It went through Parks Committee.
Went through Parks and Rec, correct.
Approved for the 3%, and then we took it and danced with it.
You guys shouldn't have stayed in the dirt.
You know, I mean, can I just add one thing? There's, I know there's two motions kind of coming here. The one for the future, to look at it, will you look at, we do vendors in the parks during certain fairs, food fairs and things like that, does that, will that apply to all that? How about the...
It's flat fee. You have a fee for service for those that are in the park.
Okay, different.
Different than a long-term contract, correct.
See, we worried about the ice cream man having to carry apples and bananas.
That's another topic.
That's a whole, yeah, that was that feel-good thing we did for food, so I will make a motion.
So we have, we have Dan's, Dan's motion in a second.
Just to come back for, with some recommendations for a, for a rate on these guys.
Okay. So on this specific one, Dan, or an overall lease policy?
Just overall, overall, so that it'll be consistent in basically the question of, you know, why is the increase 3%? Why is it 2.1? Why is it CPI? You guys can say, well, this was adopted, this is the policy adopted by council as far as lease increases is concerned.
Okay, so your motion is to direct staff to come back to council with a recommendation on lease increases?
Which, which probably won't affect this contract, but it would affect future ones.
So motion. Woody, second. Any further discussion on that? Steve?
Mr. Mayor, well, Public Works guys, the way it would have went at general services is, I would have said, can we just, you know, waive these food vendor leases altogether? And then Ron and Amy would have said, no. And Troy would have said, no. So I guess if we have to have these, I've suggested in the past, and I'll probably continue to suggest just eliminating the food vendor lease fees altogether, and then hot dogs would be, would be cheaper, and, you know, that could get passed on into the community. So it would be better economically overall, but I guess if we have to have the lease fees, then it probably would be good to have a policy for inflation, so I'm okay with that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I have one more comment. Many years ago, my bride had a hot dog stand on Independence Point, and back in those days, there were eight or nine all over the park, a little crazy, and I think it's done better, you got, they kind of pulled it down and said, you know, you need to be dressed nice. It was pretty wild back in those days. Hooligans and a lot of people in the dirt. So it has come a long way, not to take anything away from the policies that we don't have.
Okay. So we have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we want to deal with the lease situation.
I would like to move that we accept the original 3% raise for the Tiki Hut for 2015, 16, and 17.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Can't we just go with CPI? This is Public Works again, coming out in me. It seems like the other guys are doing the CPI, you know, and I wanted zero, and I know we all agreed unanimously on zero, but I understand, I spoke with the mayor, and the mayor is far more knowledgeable than I am regarding leases, so I'll trust his wisdom on this, that, you know, we need to go with an increase. But I don't, you know, that probably wouldn't pass because we all want to move on, don't we, Ron?
Yes.
And, I don't know, we didn't even get to talk about the vegan cookies, so, okay.
Will you second it, and you can talk about the vegan cookies?
So did we, did we get a second?
Yes.
Motion is second. Any other discussion?
I'm just wasting time.
Okay.
I'll just say that what we're doing is we're just accepting because the Tiki Hut guy said 3% is cool.
And it went through Ron's committee, so, yeah.
We're kind of going back to what originally it was.
And we're not bringing up the whole let's move part of that conversation.
And we'll probably never see this again. You realize that, right?
Yeah, it's never going to go to Public Works.
Okay, roll call, Renata.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Oh, yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Gookin?
Ah, yes.
Okay, motion carried. We will now move on to public hearings. This is a legislative hearing, V-14-5, Vacation of a Portion of Mill Avenue and Government Road Rights of Way situated west of Northwest Boulevard. There should be a sign-up sheet.
There it is.
For anyone wishing to talk. Short list. And we have a staff report by Gordon Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. You have, you should have a copy of the staff report in front of you, but in short, there's a request to vacate the westerly, roughly 250 feet of Mill Avenue that abuts the Merritt Office Park. There's a, one owner that had bought all the adjacent properties and come in, came in and requested the vacation. There are really no nuances. We really, there's no opportunity for that road to go through, serve the office park. There are platted lots just a few feet off of their lot line, so that would prevent any extension of Mill. We do have a water line in Mill, so if the vacation is approved, we'll retain an easement over that. Most of it is in dirt condition right now. It's unimproved. Most of it is in dirt condition right now, it's unimproved. So really, there's not a whole lot more to it as far as specifics. I can give you the mailings. We sent out 21 mailings. We received four responses. Four were, we had one for, one against, and two neutral. And we did have a comment, and I'll read it briefly. This was the one that was in opposition, opposed to restricted access to Merritt Office Park and Riverstone Development due to vacated portion of Mill Street right-of-way. But as I said earlier, there is really no opportunity to extend Mill into the Merritt Office Park. Let's see if you have a copy of that. Yeah, you have a copy of the plat in your packet. You can see there's platted lots a few feet away from the property line. And just as an aside, I've had some discussions already with the owners of Merritt Office Park to extend Davidson, which is the next road up, you can see on your plat. So that's it. Entertain any questions you might have.
Questions for Gordon? Okay, I don't see any questions. Thank you, Gordon. This is a legislative hearing, which allows opportunities for people to speak. There was no one on the list to speak. Anyone that has not signed up that wishes to speak? There is not, so I will close public comment on this. Now we're looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the vacation of a portion of Mill Avenue and Government Road right-of-way situated west of Northwest Boulevard.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll ask for a roll call, please, Renata.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried. We will move on to another legislative hearing. This is the adoption of the 2012 International Residential Code, 2012 International Energy Code, 2012 International Mechanical Code, and 2012 International Fuel/Gas Code. And we have, Ed Wagner is going to give the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Like you said, we're here to adopt some newer versions of the building codes as mandated by the state. So before you, we'll have that ordinance and to adopt the codes that you mentioned. Might want to give you a little history as far as how we got here. The codes are reviewed and amended by the State Building Code Board, and there's also committees, collaborative committees, that interject and submit some revisions to that board. And if they're approved, they go through the governor's package and into the legislative body for approval. These have all been approved in the last legislative session, and they are required to be adopted and started enforcing by the first of the year for jurisdictions that enforce the building codes. So we are, we'll be adopting these codes with the amendments from the state board. And by statute, we're also required, any amendments, the cities do, we're supposed to have a public hearing, and I'm supposed to present our proposed code amendments to you for approval. So that's why I'm here. We have a few amendments.
Okay.
So I'll start with the residential code, and I'll go, this isn't really just to be read, just going to paraphrase them, because these are the same amendments that I've, that we've had for the codes for the last three cycles. So we haven't changed any of the amendments, we're just continuing them forward. So out of the residential code, of our section 101.2, there was no provision in the code that designated how you classify these buildings as far as a number. So we're at the bottom there, what's underlined, we're calling the residents R3s and the garages and carports and stuff used. That's just to help us document, track, and to monitor the permits. It's great for pulling up stats and anything we need for, information for the public. And in most of these codes, we have the 103.2 and 103.3 sections, and that was strongly advised by the Association of Idaho Cities to not adopt these sections because our building officials are not appointed, and deputy, and the building inspectors are not deputized. So most of jurisdictions throughout the state are following suit, as we are, so we are not adopting these two sections. This will be about three times we'll talk about this. And it's section R104, 10.1, our engineering department enforces and regulates the provisions for flood hazards, so to eliminate any confusion. So we've taken out all the sections out of the residential code and just rely on our engineering department to enforce those provisions. Those same provisions, it just makes it easier. And years ago, we met with the local architects and the local engineers and some draftsmen to come up with a clear, precise document that defines what an architect's required to put together, prepare plans, what an engineer's required, or a draftsman's allowed. And this has been working very well, and haven't had any complaints, so we're just continuing this same provision. It's fairly lengthy, and it took us like six months to get this together. And there's been a few cities in the state that have also adopted this provision, so it works very well. Also in the residential code, section R106.3, it's again, the flood hazard that we're deleting provisions out of the code, the same with the one below it, R109.1.3. So we're just deleting those to make it clear. And we are charged to determine a snow load for our area, so we've determined for many years that it's a 40-pound snow load. And this just documents that, so the designers have the criteria to design the buildings for the city of Coeur d'Alene. So we'll just be maintaining that again. And there was, as far as section R302.2, I was on the building code board, there was a motion, and the motion that ended up in the IDAPA wasn't accurate, so this is correctly and accurately reflecting the motion that was presented at the board to accurately reflect the concern. The concern was, and the residential code came out a few years ago, it required sprinklers for everything out of the code, so that got deleted out by the legislators. So because the sprinklers were still in the code, as far as the code being written, they reduced provisions in there for fire-resistant construction between the units. So this provision put it back in there to beef up the requirements of the firewalls between the units. So we'll have another section like this too, but we are, through IDAPA, the building officials through the state, we're trying to clean this up, and we have a proposable running through the building code collaborative to help clear this up, so we won't have to deal with this anymore. This is another one, same reason, that they reduced the fire rating between the dwelling units to one-half hour. And there is no one-half hour assembly out there, so we just deleted it, so it still is required to be one hour. And then 302.5.3 is the same, to maintain that protection between the garage and the house. There's provisions in here, requirements you have to meet to make sure that flame and smoke doesn't pass through that firewall between your house and your garage. And it just has, basically, fire caulking, it has to be a tested assembly. You can stop me anytime if you have any questions, by the way. Riveting stuff, I know. And then the last part of that criteria is, because they were sprinklers, they reduced the thickness of the sheet rock between the house and the garage. So this language is, again, is the way it was worded before, the sprinklers were included in the residential code and reduced the requirement. We just recently had a fire in the garage, and it performed perfectly. It didn't get into the house, and it stayed where it was supposed to, right inside the garage, and it didn't breach this firewall, so this system does work if it's installed properly. So we're going to propose to maintain that again also. And then, kind of the same provision we've been requiring for years, that under the stairs, since that's sometimes your main travel path to get in and out of the house, especially when the fire out of a basement, some of the older homes don't have egress windows out of the basement, so this is your only means to get out of that basement. So we require sheet rock underneath the stairs. A lot of times, guess what you store under your stairs? You've got a lot of storage and a good fire fuel that would, may deter you from getting out of your house. So we do require the 5/8 Type X sheet rock underneath the stairs. Again, it's what we've been requiring for years, and hasn't been any problems. And R13.1, it's the same as before, it's the same language that beefs back up that separation between the townhouses because of the sprinkler provision, so that's the way it was worded prior to. And then section R322 is again, the flood resistance, we're just deleting that to be consistent with engineering. And then R403.1, 1.4, 1.1, we have to determine the frost level based on the freezing depths, which is, we will still maintain, 24 inches below grade, you have to have your footings, so your footings won't heave and cause damage to your structure. And in the residential code, it came up with a new provision for required reinforced theme bar in the foundations. It was pretty complex, so we changed it, and if the contractors choose to, we have a prescriptive provision, which we've been doing for years, that just basically says you have number four bars, four foot on center vertical and two foot on horizontal for anything less than four feet in height, anything over four feet to eight feet, and just 18 inches on center grid. It makes it pretty simple, you don't have to go through the tables and figure it out, and it's been working, so we're just maintaining that again. And then in the gas section of the residential code, as we have in the past, there's a concern that the unvented room heaters that put the products, can put their products combustion back into the home, we don't feel comfortable with this. This is another statewide building official determination that we will delete those, the provisions for those, and we won't allow those to be installed in homes. And that's what G2445 is the same, it just, we just don't adopt that section, that we don't allow that. So on into the International Fuel/Gas Code. Again, it's the 103.2, 103.3 sections, or deal with the appointment and the deputize of the inspectors, we're not adopting. And the same provisions for the unvented room heaters of the fuel gas, it just mirrors what we did in the residential code, and we delete those two exceptions. And then 621.4, we add Rs, which is residential, to the groups that are prohibited to be installed And another, International Mechanical Code, again, we have the 103.2 and 103.3, we're not adopting. And that finishes my presentation.
Any questions for Ed? Don't see any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is, again, a legislative hearing. I did not have anyone signed up on the list to testify, but if there's anyone wishing to testify, we'll open public testimony now. Okay, none seen, then we will close the public testimony, and we'll look for council action.
I'll take it.
Okay.
So I would like to move to pass the first reading of Council Bill 141021, as it is reasonable and necessary for the safety of the city residents.
Jiggle.
Motion and a second discussion. Seeing no discussion. Renata, could you read the title, please?
Council Bill Number 14-1021, An Ordinance Amending the Municipal Code of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho. Amending Municipal Code Sections 2.96.020, 2.96.050, and 15.08.005 to adopt the 2012 International Residential Energy Conservation Fuel/Gas and Mechanical Codes, and clarifying the duties of the International Board of Appeals, providing repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing severability, and providing the publication of a summary, and providing an effective date.
Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to suspend the rules and adopt Council Bill 141021 by having read its title once.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Renata.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.